Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order for the April 9th, 2019. Mr. Woods, would you give us the invocation, please?
Oh, grace of heaven and father, we thank you first and foremost, Lord, for this day. Father, thank you for the sunshine, we thank you for the rain. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to gather again with more time, Lord, and be able to come together as one mind to be able to make all kind of growth. Father, geez all the blessed, in your son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. We have approval of agenda items, please take a look at your agenda, your packet for the evening.
Madam Chair, I make a most will accept the agenda as written, second.
It's been moved in second that we accept the agenda as written, all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you, it's unanimous. First, we have a presentation for the WC lag time reporting award to be presented by Mr. Van Henson from the South Carolina Association of Counties. Please come forward, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Henson. Good evening, members of council and residents of Marlborough County. My name is Van Henson, I'm the risk manager with the South Carolina Association of Counties, where we do a variety of services for our member counties, one of which is administered to South Carolina County's Workers Compensation Trust Fund, of which Marlborough County is a member of, and we're grateful for your continued support and dedication to maintaining a strong association and trust. Now, the reason for my visit this evening is to bring to light a recent accomplishment for Marlborough County. We have recently concluded our annual trust membership meeting, and where Marlborough County was actually recognized as having the second-best lag time indicator of counties within our trust, and that rating was actually .09, not nine. Now, what this means is lag time is how quickly from the time an incident or accident is reported to the county that they get this information turned in to the insurers, and so we can start the proper process for everyone involved. .09, that's not .9, that's not, you know, that, I mean, .09, that's almost immediately. Now, you may be wondering too, well, second place, who was first, what were they? It's actually a tie with two counties, .05. It's like, you know, gosh, were you guys almost standing there when these sorts of things happen? But with that said, I mean, this may seem, the recognition itself, you know, may seem insignificant, but it could be followed from the truth. Proper reporting of the claims allows the case to actually be handled very quickly for the employees to receive, you know, everything due to them in expeditious fashion, and for professional case managers to get a hold of their, you know, cases and ensure that the proper care is being administered to the injured worker. Now, you can imagine that the importance of this is great as well from the standpoint, if you are an injured employee and you're getting contacted from your adjuster in a quick, timely fashion, you feel people looking out for you, you know, versus not to hear from something for weeks, you know, days, weeks, and in some cases, unfortunately, we've even had where claims haven't been turned in for months. Can you imagine being an injured worker there wondering, you know, no one seems to care about me? So, it is obviously a very vital thing as far as getting these things through. And time and time again, we've seen proven outcomes of quicker recovery times, cost savings by getting these claims into the systems quickly, and getting proper and timely medical care for the injured worker. Now, your county's commitment to the risk management's a great use of the resource, and of course demonstrates exceptional stewardship of the taxpayers' dollars in Marlborough County. So, you know, the county should be commended for their efforts in protecting the assets, namely the employees of the county. I kinda hate a miss and didn't get a chance to catch Grover today, I know, you know, he retired recently, and Grover done a tremendous job as far as with things like this over the years, and understand you guys have looked and have a replacement, we're looking forward to working with that individual and everyone else within the process. So, on behalf of the South Carolina Association, I'd like to present to the members of council, Mr. Monerlin, I'll just present it here to you as far as the award for second place in workers' compensation claims lag time for 2018 year. So, again, we appreciate all you guys do. But thank you all for allowing me to be here this evening, continue doing the good work that you're doing, and remember, we're there, we're advocates for you, and anything we can do to assist you guys, reach out to us, and we'll be more than happy to assist in any way possible. All right, thank you, Mr. Van Henson.
Thank you, sir. We attribute all of that to the good work of our county administrator and his staff, so thank you on behalf of the employees. Next, we have a public hearing, ordinance 779, to approve the conveyance of a 30-foot-wide easement and lease agreement to Duke Energy Progress LLC. Mr. Monerlin, please give us the details.
Yes, ma'am, this is an ordinance that you've read two times so far, this is a, an easement located next to the Delta property to, for them to access a electrical substation. It's nothing to do with the Delta project, it just happens to be there at the Delta site, and Mr. Carabo's been working with Duke. It's basically they're just making sure they have legal access to all their facilities, and this is sort of a standard agreement.
Are there any comments from the public? All right, hearing none, we'll move to ordinance 781, to provide for the franchising procedures and standards for private ambulance service in Marlborough County. And we are being asked to postpone the request?
Yes, ma'am, we had a little more review to do on this, but we had advertised a public hearing, so we wanted to have it on the agenda and then ask to postpone it. The additional reading of it is not included on the agenda, so we'll re-advertise for the public hearing and take care of it for the next meeting.
All right, thank you. Next, recommendation of the zoning and planning department to authorize Verizon Wireless to construct a 250-foot self-supporting antenna and support structure at 121 Marlborough Road, Bennettsville, South Carolina.
Madam Chair, I'd call on Donald Hamilton to come up and explain this project for council.
Verizon Wireless is looking for approval for building of a 215-foot self-supporting antenna support structure, commonly known as a cellphone tower. It's within a 100-foot by 100-foot leased parcel off of 121 Marlborough Road, they're calling it the Crooked Creek location, that's near the intersection with 1541 West, near 912 and Marlborough Road. The parcel's being leased, the properly executed lease agreement has been filed, Verizon has identified and secured this location to provide the system upgrade that's needed for an area of the county that's lacking adequate coverage. County ordinance 719 requires a fee of $2,500 per tower, which has been paid. Ordinance 716 regulates the harmonious coexistence of towers and other land uses through guidelines for review, placement, design, co-location of other tenants, and safety. All of these have been met by the applicant Verizon, they filed the application for the permit with the planning and zoning department. The application's been accepted for review, and per the ordinance, the print ad was run in the Herald Advocate on March 21st, 2019, and the same posted on the front door of the admin building, William P. Wallace Building. All the landowners within the 1,500-foot of the tower were notified in writing with the intent to construct the tower. The department got no responses from those letters. Based on the ordinances 716 and 719, the planning and zoning staff finds that the Verizon Crooked Creek proposed project meets all the requirements to be issued a permit, proper steps have been taken to have it approved. Also, it's within the law that county council act as a planning and zoning commission until a certified commission be seated that we're working on, and planning and zoning staff recommends that the project be approved.
All right.
Got any questions?
I don't think so, but it's good to hear that that part of the county will have some wireless service.
Yes, ma'am.
That'll be a big boon to parents and children that have these Chromebooks they're using in school.
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Approval of minutes for the March 12th regular council meeting?
I move we approve the minutes as written, for second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the minutes from the March 12th, 2019, regular council meeting as written, all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. Thank you, unanimous. Ms. Plato, thank you for the absence, thank you for that correction, all right. Just so you see you being here. Oh, business, third reading for ordinance 779, to approve the conveyance of a 30-foot-wide easement and lease agreement to Duke Energy Progress LLC. We've had the public hearing with no comment. If there are no questions, we entertain a motion.
I move we approve ordinance 779, second.
It's been moved in second that we approve ordinance 779, all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand, thank you. Ordinance 780, authorizing the execution of municipal election transfer and cost-free agreement between Marlborough County and the town of McCall, third reading. Mr. Monerlin, additional comments, Nick?
This is the final reading, and this is the same agreement we had with the other towns, and was requested by the election commission, so it's just clean housekeeping to make sure we have an agreement in place.
All right. If no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion, approve, second.
Moved in second that we approve ordinance 780, authorizing the execution of municipal election transfer between the county and the town of McCall. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands, thank you. Next, we'll move the new business, ordinance 782, to adopt the annual budget and to make appointments, excuse me, to make appropriations for Marlborough County for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, ending June 30th, 2020. First reading and title only.
Yes, ma'am, we're starting the budget process, and this is to move us along on the readings. We will be requesting work session with council, and we'll provide some alternate dates to you all and the chair to pick a good date in the next two or three weeks. But this is just to get the ball rolling, as you know, we have to have three readings.
That was gonna be my next question, when do we schedule some work sessions?
Yeah, I think we have department head meetings starting next week, so we really need to get past that in probably another week, so we have something to actually, you know, to use your time wisely, so.
Thank you.
Two or three weeks, and we'll make sure we poll everyone on the phone to pick a good date.
All right. All in favor, title only, first reading for the budget?
So moved.
Moved in second, Ms. Plato, that we approve and title only, first reading for our budget for the next fiscal year, all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands, thank you. Ordinance 783, to approve the capital improvement plan for Marlborough County for the period of the fiscal year 2020 through 2024, here again, first reading, title only.
This is a companion part of the budget that we do every year as far as our capital improvements, so again, this is to get us going, and we will go into detail in the budget workshop.
All right. Entertaining a motion?
Motion, second.
It's been moved in second that we approve first reading, title only, of ordinance 783, for our capital improvement plan. All in favor, please let it be known by raising your right hands, thank you. Resolution 041901, approving financing terms through First Citizen Bank and Trust Company Incorporated for capital expenses for the emergency medical services department.
Yes, ma'am, this is a final, hopefully the final piece we have to do to execute a lease purchase agreement that you've already approved. This is for the purchase of EMS-related equipment, it's $850,000, 3.01% for five years. Again, they required us to have a very specific form that you all vote on, and here it is.
All right.
I move we accept this resolution, second.
It's been moved in second that we accept resolution 041901, which provides financial services as needed to purchase equipment and supplies for our new EMS department. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands, thank you. Recommendation of the planning and zoning department to authorize Verizon Wireless to construct the 215-foot self-supporting antenna and support structures at 121 Marlborough Road. We just heard the information, the details from Mr. Hamilton during the public hearing. Entertaining a motion to approve this recommendation?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the recommendation of staff for this new tower to be erected in the Wallace, excuse me, the Marlborough Road area. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands, thank you. Consideration of the purchase of a 2014 mobile home for the establishment of an EMS station in the Wallace area, details, Mr. Monerlin, please.
Yes, ma'am, you also have approved this as far as amending the budget, but this is a specific document to buy a single wide mobile home that's currently the Marlborough Rescue EMS station in Wallace, and the county would buy this from Marlborough Rescue and relocate that to another piece of land that y'all approved last meeting up the road. So, this is just to make sure we have good approval of the specific piece of a mobile home.
Right. And all the details are included in your packet if you need to have some more information.
It's pretty much a run-of-the-mill, you know, single wide mobile home, if you've got more in here.
Well, it's equipped with some standard kinds of things, too, all right. All in favor, let it be known by entertaining a motion, and we'll vote on this, make motion. All right, Ms. Plato?
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second that we approve the consideration for purchase of this mobile home for an EMS station in the Wallace area, all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands, thank you. Next, consideration of the purchase of a 2017 Ford ambulance for EMS department.
Yes, ma'am, this would be a fifth unit for the EMS department. I understand we would take possession of this immediately, and it would, we would have an arrangement that if in extreme backup situation Marlborough Rescue could use it. But this is to be purchased from Marlborough County Rescue Squad, and you can see the details in the back, but again, it's similar to the units we just purchased, the same chassis, so it's like a truck front and a box back, so we're asking council for that specific approval for this purchase.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
I make a motion we'll accept the purchase of the 2017 Ford ambulance.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second that we purchase this 2017 ambulance for EMS, all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands, thank you. You said this is the fifth unit?
Yes, ma'am, yeah, so it's a backup, I guess you'd say, or to rotate in and out when other things are being maintained, so we can properly maintain everything.
We'll be well-prepared. All right, next, solid waste collection, some options that we should consider being recommended by staff for the subsequent years beginning in 2019 fiscal year.
Madam Chair, members of council, you'll find a document on your desk here, and apologize for it being complicated, but unfortunately, it's a complicated matter. As we move towards preparing the budget and move towards the next fiscal year, our contract for trash collection in the county will expire in December, and so at this point, council will have to make a decision of what direction to go. And so what we presented here are several options for that collection. You know, state law requires that you have to take your trash either to a manned site like the convenience centers we have, you can't just have dumpsters, or you can have a roll cart system like we currently have to collect the trash from each house. The issue we face here, than anybody doing that faces here, is, you know, how much it costs in collecting the money from folks and that sort of thing. So, this gives you some options, and I felt like it was important to go ahead and put those, these out in the public, so that you all can be thinking about it, and maybe some of your constituents would have opinions or input on this. And I'll try to break it down and be brief on this. The first option is to have convenience centers only. So, what we would do is go out and add, probably add one convenience center, maybe two. We would definitely need one probably in the Stanton's Barbecue, Brightsfield, that sort of area district, too. We have one in Blenheim, we would have to run all the time, we'd have ones in McCall, one in Bennettsville, one in Wallace that would have to run all the time, basically six or seven days a week to take the trash. The cost of that will have to be determined, it may be slightly less than having a cart at every house, but we're concerned that, that folks in the county, a lot of folks don't have transportation, or maybe it would be difficult to get there, and then some folks maybe wouldn't be motivated to even take it there, and it ends up in the woods, and we'll spend the savings on solid waste enforcement. So, those are the concerns there. The next option is basically what we're doing now, where we contract with a company, an outside company, to come in, give everybody a roll cart, and then send you a bill, and then collect the bill. Currently, that's costing about, I think, $20 a month, which is about $240 a year. Now, you know, that's, there are issues there, it's difficult for folks to collect that money, and right now, those carts are provided to the people living at those places and not the property owners, so when you have somebody renting, you end up chasing them around, and it's a challenge. So, that's some of the concerns with that one. The next option would be to have the roll carts and get someone, an outside company to do it, well, I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm out of order here. The first, the next option would be to start a county department, where the county operates the trash trucks, the county puts the roll carts out, the county bills, and then collects the fees. Now, before I go any further, you would bill and collect the fees one of two ways. One way is you could send, the county could send everyone a bill every month, and folks would come somewhere in the county and pay that bill. Now, that would put us in about the same situation as the folks that are doing it now, you'd be chasing some folks for the money, and that would create a challenge, because we would, if we did it this way, we would tell the outside contractor, hey, every month, we're gonna pay you, and then we're gonna collect the money from folks. Well, that's all good and fine until folks don't pay, and we've got a $100,000 a month bill, and the county's running out of cash to manage that. The other way of collecting the money would be to put the fee on county property taxes, like we do the $40 fee. Obviously, if we did that, the $40 fee would either go away or be absorbed into that. So, that's, that's how you would collect the money. As far as the county running a department, sounds good, maybe not good. It would require the county to spend about $1 million or $1.3 million to buy trucks. I mean, just about, the rollout part could be as much as $300,000. And with our recent foray into EMS, you know, you, you might not be a good time to do that, you're stretching out, stretching out. The last, the last option on the sheet is to go with an outside contractor who'll operate the service that, that the county bills and collects from the citizens, and again, you'd have the same options, you would either charge the people and collect every month, or you would put it on their tax bill, or we wouldn't run a department. Now, some, something to keep in your mind is, right now, folks who have red carts in the county are paying about $240 a year, or about $20 a month. Marion County does sort of like this, where they go out and get someone to do it, and the county bills, and their citizens are paying $1,575 a month, which is about $190 a year. So, folks that already have a red cart, who are being responsible and have the cart like they're supposed to, would see a savings. The only negative was that they would have to pay it all at one time, in the, you know, when tax bills come out, within that, wherever, 30, 45-day period. So, that's the last option we presented, and probably the best one as far as being able to get, you know, you wanna go out for bids, and you wanna have people make proposals to do this, and I think the struggle you're gonna have is folks coming in here and, and wondering if they can collect the money, because we are a poor county, we know that, we all know that, and it makes it a challenge. We're also a rural county, so there's a lot of distance sometimes between houses you have to pick up, and it's not like you're in the city where you go 1, 2, 3, 4, and pick up the trash, so that creates a challenge. If these, these outside contractors know that the county's gonna collect the money, and every month or quarter, the county writes them a check, then you're gonna have more folks come in and bid, and anytime you can have more folks competing for something, obviously you'll end up with a better service. So, again, it's a complicated issue, and it's something that needs to be discussed in more detail at the budget workshop, but we did want to put this in everybody's brain, and also folks that, public here tonight are on YouTube or Facebook, would understand that this is coming, and we have to figure out how to do it best. One last part to keep in mind is currently we charge a $40 fee on every dwelling in the county outside of the cities and the towns, and with the changes in the law, or the changes in the enforcement of the law in the city of Bennettsville, we've seen a lot of junk, you know, not just household trash, couches and stuff, coming to the convenience center, and we would, staff at this time's gonna probably propose to you all some fee that goes on everybody's bill. So, if you live in the city, or you live in the county, or whatever, you can come to the convenience center and dump whatever you need to dump, aside from your household garbage. By spreading that out, it becomes a small fee, you know, we don't know what it'll be, but maybe it's 10, 15, $20, and it makes it to where you, you can do what you want to. And the other thing is, I think that we, we will, staff will approach the towns of McCall, Blenheim, Clio, and Tatum if they have it, about the service they use to pick up roll carts in their city limits, and if their contract's at a point that they're being renewed, maybe we can go in together and include that volume in the deal, that would help with getting a good deal. So, again, I apologize for it being so complicated and running through it, running through it so quickly, but it is an issue that needs to be known. I can answer any questions, I'll try to.
All right. Very comprehensive, and yes, this is something we knew we'd have to face sooner or later. I don't get many calls about garbage since I live in the city, but I got a call from one of their customers, and the customer was being chastised because she was paying her bill three months in advance, and they said that hurt their billing process, so I don't understand that either. And I think it's important that our citizens have someplace to dispose of household goods. The city changed their rules, and I've seen some abandoned things in different neighborhoods that people don't have trucks to take them to the landfill, so that's gonna be a problem, too, so.
We had a potential someone moving here for economic development, and we had to take him around, and Mr. Carabo was with me, had to get pretty creative on explaining why there was a white couch on the side of the road, you know? And of course, we did, we said it's a recent change, and you know, things are working out, but yeah, there's gotta be a better solution there.
Right, all right. Thank you for that information, and we'll definitely have this on our agenda as we go through the budget process. All right, appointments to boards and commissions, are there any tonight? We have reports, finance report, and administrator's report?
Yes, ma'am, and I report pretty brief tonight, we, seems like we just met a week ago. We do have some employee service anniversaries this month. Ms. Tricia Bundy's been here six years, seems like a year, some days seems like probably 42 years, so Martha McQuigg, 17 years, Mr. Luther Brown, 17 years, and Don Drigger's eight years, so we thank everyone for their service. In that same vein, we have a retirement drop-in for Ms. Cindy Deaver from the Tax Assessor's Office. She is retiring after eight years with the county, first in the treasurer's office and second in the Tax Assessor's Office. Her last day will be April, this Friday, the 12th, and we ask if you, if you're in town or can make it to come by, there's a reception from 1:00 to 3:00 at the Tax Assessor's Office. We wish her well in her retirement. We are moving forward with the county cleanup day on May 4th from 8:00 to noon. We ask you again to forward any suggested areas for cleanup or groups interested in participating to Ms. Bundy. We wanna remind citizens that if you, if you have a conflict with that time, and you wanna do your part Friday afternoon, or even later, or earlier Saturday, you can still sign up, get your materials, your supplies, and go out and do that. We wanna, we're more interested in the result than making sure everybody punches the clock at 8:00 and punches out at 12:00, so please pass that along. With regards to economic development, we have two active projects right now totaling approximately $35 million in new investment. We've had multiple visits with both projects and appear to be moving in the right direction. We have some other smaller projects that will need to come to council, a couple of them involving solar energy, which is a new thing you're seeing happen in rural counties, and these folks request tax incentives, just like economic development, like an industry or something like that, so that will be something you will have to deal with here soon. One of the projects we are working is, is at the Delta site, we told you that, and staff is working long hours to understand what we need to do to accommodate that project at the Delta site. As I've said, I think publicly before, we really weren't ready for them. We put the word out, we're doing this Delta cleanup, and all of a sudden, we have a lot of interest, but we are hustling around, and I think we're gonna be able to meet their needs. If you're up that way, you may notice us starting to clean that site up even more. Councilman Woods, Aris, and Clio, the Ball Door Plant?
Uh, Councilman Woods, Aris, and Clough, the Ball Door Plant, will be announcing dates in the next week or so for a job fair. We, we get a lot of calls, people either wanting to sell them something, or do business with them, or get a job, and, um, we're happy to say they've, uh, started renovations down there, and we're in contact with two or three departments of that company every week, uh, on trying to get things going for them, or helping them get it going. But as soon as we know something on this, we'll put it out to council, and put it out on Facebook and all that. We're excited about, uh, the progress there. Um, as far as administrator's report, I've already mentioned that we'll, uh, be asking for a budget workshop here soon. Uh, we will begin department meetings next week. We, we put out, uh, the forms and the information to the department heads so they can prepare and come meet with, uh, staff. Again, uh, Ms. Liner and myself and Mr. Carabo are teaming up to do that with Ainsley out on maternity leave. Uh, I did, our financial report, I apologize, is in front of you as well. Um, our expenses are at seventy-three percent. Of course, we're about seventy-five percent in the year, and revenue is on track as well. I can answer any questions?
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Excuse me, one second.
Go ahead.
I have to ask you a question. I, I wanna get an update on how we stand with the, with that hospital coming in, and across state nine under, um, Chairman Lloyd working with us on that, just wanna know where he's gone.
We, um, we are waiting a new, a second meeting time, and apparently, it's just a matter of finding a time that fits everyone. Um, so, we're waiting on that, and Chairman Prince has sent a letter to the towns and the city, and the county, to ask that they, uh, approve the resolution that you all approved, uh, supporting the removal of barriers, legal barriers, from somebody coming in. I don't, uh, Ms. Bundy, I don't think, as of today, we've received any response from any, from the city, anyway. Okay? So, we'll follow up with them and see what's going on with that.
You said we haven't received any response from the city at all?
No, sir. No, I think they meet next week, I'm not sure when they meet.
They had a meeting last night, but, you know.
Okay.
Okay. Um, since the only name I've heard of is Senator Lloyd, trying to work with us, have you had any other senators or House Representatives? Because, I mean, I just don't see anything happening from anybody, and I've been bothering you for a while, so I've said once, I thought we need help from the country. So, only when I seem to step up to the plate, so-called Senator Lloyd. So, dear, I got the ashing about, uh, the House Representatives and, uh, senators, to have they came to join us in any fashion, try to help us get this thing moving.
Let me, you-
I mean, that's just straight up.
Let me shed a little light on that, um-
Okay.
-Mr. Gladon, um, we went to Senator Malloy, uh, after not having any kind of response from Representative Henigan last year, when we first approached her about trying to get some assistance, um, to be able to interest a hospital with building a stand-alone freestanding emergency department. And Mr. Malloy, with his seventeen years of experience, and with the connections that he has, when we had our first meeting with him in his office, he was very receptive to it, and he agreed to set up, uh, a second meeting with the representative from DHEC, HHS, and from the Hospital Association. Um, Ms. Plato and Mr. Steen, along with the administrator, and two representatives from the Hospital Charities Trust, Jane Rogers and Joe Breton, and that was the second meeting in Columbia. They were also receptive and interested. Um, I don't know if you have a PowerPoint available, but we had, um, presentation, and it shows Marlborough County is in a unique position. We have a couple of hospitals in the area who could legally, if they would, build a standalone emergency department. If they're not interested, there are about five hospitals in the area in North Carolina, but currently, there's a law that prevents a hospital in North Carolina from establishing a standalone emergency department unless they have a hospital in the, in the state. So, we, we are saying, if we can't get a local hospital to build this facility, that we have special, uh, approval just for Marlborough County because of the uniqueness of our needs and where we are situated, to allow a North Carolina facility to do that. Uh, the third meeting that we're waiting to have is by, for Mr. Malloy to be able to get all the people at the table, will include representatives, representatives from MUSC and McCloud. So, we are, it may not seem like we're doing anything, but we are, and, um, at our second meeting in Columbia, Representative Henigan, um, was at that meeting, she came at the end, she's been giving updates and the status of everything, but Mr. Lo, Mr. Malloy, uh, Senator Malloy is driving this effort because of his position in the Senate, and his experience, and his connections with the kind of people we need at the table to make these decisions for us.
I, I appreciate that, and, and I know what we're doing on the island, I just didn't know what was happening in place else, because it hadn't been coming to us. So, if, I mean, I, I'm not jumping on the city, but the city, the city's right here, they're not coming in saying, well, what can we do? If our House Representatives is not saying, what can we do? If we're not hearing from them, then we got a problem, and it can't just be on Senator Malloy, because there's connections, it gotta be a group effort from everybody, and that's the only way we're gonna get any help in it for the hospital, is from everybody coming together. And that is where the public comes involved also, to say, hey, let's get this here done.
Well, there are two things in motion. I am preparing to, uh, go to the city council meeting next week and ask them to support the, um, resolution, and, uh, I think we've heard back from the other cities and the towns.
No, we have not.
All right.
We did hear from Blenheim.
Yes.
And they-
Yes, Senator Williams.
Okay. And I think it, you know, it's, it's at the point now where we need to-
Yes.
-staff can follow up one more time, uh, it, it is, I can't understand why somebody wouldn't support it.
Well, that's true, because it will affect all the citizens in the county. And, um, we're letting Senator Malloy drive this effort because he is the chair of the delegation, since he has the most seniority. So, uh, he makes the decision as to when to, uh, how he updates the other, um, people, Senator, Ms. Henigan, um, Senator Williams, and Representative Hayes. So, he's keeping them abreast of what's going on, but he's the main force behind this effort, and we appreciate his help.
Yes, we do.
Yeah. So, if you can join me at the city council meeting next week, that'll be helpful.
I, I will be-
I know, you will be, thank you, and anybody else that wants to come.
Yeah, just welcome, everybody.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, we have, um, three citizens that have signed up. Ms. Stuckey, come forward, please.
Hi, my name is Maria Stuckey. I am a student at Bennettsville Elementary. I'm not only my school champion, but I am the overall fifth grade champion for the Marlborough County School District. I represent the Marlborough County School District at Francis Marion at the PD Regional Spelling Bee in Florence. Out of the PD region, I placed three hundred and fifty-four kids in the PD area. I'm a vet for a kid living in Charlotte, Kid, Kids Count Club, the worst place for a child to live in South Carolina. I beat several fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and I'm a vet for a ten-year-old. It's been a long road to nationals, I am, and I am living proof that you can do anything if you put your mind to it. Hard work pays off. Now, I need help from my community in the form of donations to sponsors. I have reached fifteen hundred so far, and I'm almost there. My spelling bee platform is to show people, especially children, that they can do anything if they put their minds to it. I am proof of that I was only, I was not only a preemie at two pounds and four ounces, but became the ambassador for the Marlborough and Chester counties. So, if you want to donate or sponsor in person or anonymously, you can give, uh, my bell for me, Maria is going to nationals. Thank you.
Ms. Stuckey, um, yes, if you can give a cup, a comp, um, excuse me, a copy of what you just read, I'm thinking, I'm hearing that you are fifth grader at BIS-
Yes.
-and that you won the spelling bee competition for the county, for all of the schools?
Yes.
All right, and the next step is going to a regional or state tournament? We couldn't quite hear that part. She has a soft voice, we understand. Oh, poppy's voice, wonderful, uh-huh.
Um, she's the fifth grade overall winner for the spelling bee for the school district. She went on to the regional bee in Florence, and she placed third out of, like, the whole PD area.
Fifty-four, yeah.
So, now she qualifies for nationals. And what she was asking, if you wanted to sponsor, donate, or anything, 'cause she'll be going in May. So, she's a little fifth grader, and then her little thing, she says, I beat several eighth graders in seventh and sixth, 'cause she was ten. But, um, that's her thing, is reading, and now here it is, she's beat out quite a few kids in spelling, and she was saying she was a preemie, so she went from two pounds and four ounces fighting, and kinda being a little overcomer to that, to now being the best speller in the fifth grade in the school district, and then beating an eighth grader, and a couple other eighth graders in our PD area. And one of the things she said was that, you know, Kids Count said Marlborough County was literally the worst place for kids to grow up, and then to see what good things come out of Marlborough County, despite what others may think of us. So, here it is, we got somebody going to the bee.
Thank you for this information, and we'll take it under consideration. Congratulations, young lady. It's quite an accomplishment. Wow, yes. All right, thank you for the information here. All right, Reverend James E. Smith?
I stand before you this afternoon, or this evening rather, um, as a voice and an advocate for PD Coalition. I don't know how much time do I have?
Three minutes, sir.
Three minutes. All right, three minutes. I remember years ago, when I began pastoring, I would take my watch off, and lay it on the podium, and my daughter said to me, Daddy, why you put that watch up there? You keep on preaching there, after you look at the watch. I'm not gonna put it in my watch up here, but I'm gonna be mindful of the three minutes. Um, PD Coalition is a very, very great entity in this county. It do a lot of great things. And first of all, I want to thank Marlborough County Council for your generous donations to PD Coalition, and I encourage you to continue to make those donations to PD Coalition. This been Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and for Child Abuse Prevention Month. These services that PD Coalition provides are much-needed services, and you will be surprised, astonished, at the numbers of sexual assaults and child abuse cases nationwide. Just to give you a few numbers, um, one out of every six women admits to being a victim of attempted or completed rape in her lifetime. That's one too many. Twelve thirty-four years of, uh, years old are the highest risk at sexual assault. Fifty-five percent of rape cases happen near or in the victim's home. Fifteen percent of rape happens in a public place, and twelve percent of them know their assault, or their sin, excuse me. And men, one out of thirty-three men are sexually assaulted nationwide. One too many. Sixty-eight percent of the victims of child abuse are abused by family members. That's a sad commentary. Four children are dead. Two-point-nine million cases of child abuse reported each year in the United States. Six-hundred-and-forty-six children service at Durant Children's Center in 2018. This is spiraling information, and it certainly hits around the center of the heart. One case of abuse of any type is one too many, and with your efforts, the monies that you give, provide service to those who need the service most. And we just wanna say thank you, and continue to do the great job that you do in providing the funds to PD Coalition. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. Mrs. Brenda Dixon?
Madam Chair, persons, members of the board, administrative staff, ladies and gentlemen, I think we just found out a way to get more than three minutes. I thought one of us, one of us, it was striking one of us off. Okay, but, um, he covered, um, some of the things and let you know what we're on about. And I've been coming here for years, just thanking you and telling you how much we appreciate what you're doing for the PD Coalition, and to let you know that we still working to keep the crisis center right here in Bennettsville, and we have the shelter. We changed up just a little bit with the shelter, you know, we used to keep the families there, try to keep them about three months, now we're trying to keep them there eighteen months. This way, they have an opportunity to have counselors, work with their children, and even, um, help them to get jobs and housing and things like that. You can't do much in three months, but eighteen months is a much better situation, and the shelter is full right now. And even though we ask you for your support as a council, we need individual support. Um, it was just wonderful when we got this gentleman on board, he's just done so many things and, um, to help us out and bring other people, because we cannot, it's hard to raise the funds in Marlborough County to keep the crisis center and the shelter running. Um, right over in Dorrit, they'll have a program, Dancing with the Stars, and raised, raised this past year a hundred and four thousand dollars. We try to have a program here in Marlborough County to raise funds, and last year, we did get up to ten thousand dollars. We just, we don't have the resources. So, anything you can do to help us individually and as a group, because we really want to support this effort. You see what's going on? And we have the Durant Center in Florence, along with the Crisis Center and the, um, Shelter. So, anything you can do to help us individually, and we do need board members. I don't know why everybody shy away from this group, because it's a working board, and, but you're a working board, too. So, if you, individually, if you wanna come in and join with us, we would appreciate that, and thank you so much for giving us this time.
All right. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I stopped, wanted to ask one question, I didn't make it to five minutes to sign up, but I, I don't need three minutes. If not, I'll come back next hour.
Thank you, good evening, Madam Chair, and to the council members, I just wanted to take a moment. My name is Gregory McCool, currently reside here in Marlborough County. I'm employed by the Marlborough County School District as superintendent. I wanted to come and speak on behalf of myself and the school district. I know recently, there was an article in the paper, and I did not, uh, think that it reflected the way that I would have liked for it to. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to come and say to you is that, uh, we have a great working relationship with Sheriff Lemon. Uh, he's been more than gracious in assisting us, uh, throughout my time and my tenure here in Marlborough County. Uh, we recently engaged in some conversations with Sheriff Lemon, as well as with Ron Munnell. Uh, I think the conversations were going rather well. Uh, where they will take us, we don't know. We're in the middle of a budget season, just like you are, uh, but I did want it to come out and publicly acknowledge the fact that this council has been great in working with us as a partner, uh, for this district and for this community, and I wanted you to hear me say that without you having to wonder and worry about where we stand as a school district. So, that was less than three minutes.
Less than a minute, thank you. Sheriff?
Sheriff, I, I just wanted to say, I'm grateful for y'all that done what you do for myself and on the park, and I thank all of y'all, and also the county and the citizens more, Captain, I wanna say to Sheriff, I thank y'all.
All right. Recognition, council members? Start of all, Mr. Wood?
Um, like, with the, um, the plant company, probably, like I said, it, it buzzed, that is, that is very, very positive, um, I've been getting calls, wanna know when in the workshop, and I'm gonna tell you, you know, in, in the next month, between now and May, we'll be having a workshop, and people are excited, um, and it's, it's a buzz for the whole county, you know, 'cause we know, we hope that, um, some citizens in Marlborough County, many of them, like eighty percent, hit for Marlborough County, 'cause that would make the ball roll, and, and make everybody excited and, and motivated to come back here. And with the addition of the, um, tower- And with the addition of the, uh, Tower of Horizon, maybe you know, tower down the bar, don't bar, play your last circle. My grandkids will come home, they ain't going to internet. They, but that, that, that affect all the areas. So, you know, when we get the opportunity to have a plant coming in, providing, bringing the day on with their towers, we, behind we catching up. And with that, that decision of Marlboro County, we're asking a lot, but when we get something, we appreciate it and, and we continue to strive forward. So we looking forward to, um, the plant that Clyde will come in and hopefully, um, Mullin, Mr. Mullin, his staff will get the Delta plant rolling and, you know, other little spinoff might come, come our way.
Alright, Ms. Plato? Mr. Meesley?
I would just say how impressed I was with Ms. Maria Stuckey with her success with the spelling bee and to keep up the good work and I'm sure we'll hear good things more in the future.
Yeah, I feel the same way about the good work the fifth graders doing over here. Uh, in fact, they all led the city county to, um, help with the donation to, uh, Senator Lloyd Washington, that are representatives. I would appreciate that a great deal.
I'd just like to say that, uh, we had Wade H. Prince, Rick, uh, dedication at the Recreation Center in Blenheim, uh, last week and, uh, it was real nice. I learned a lot about Principal Prince. I didn't know, I, I knew he was a good fella, I knew he was a, uh, a tough fella, but he was good-hearted and all. But I learned a lot more things about him too. I'm just saying that I appreciate everybody coming. It meant a lot to me. I know it did to Dr. Prince also. And, uh, we looking forward to doing more things there because people using the gym, uh, it's looking good and we appreciate what everybody's done and we want to do more. So everybody will keep helping us out. We're going to keep it clean and keep it right, just like he did. Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary?
Uh, the McCall May Fest is coming up, May the fourth. Uh, that is the same day we have the cleanup. The cleanup will start that morning and the May Fest, I think it actually cranks up about ten in the morning and, uh, it's all day affair, really a whole weekend affair for McCall. It's a big thing. It's been going on about twelve years and I always have huge crowds, so just want to let everybody know about that. The Three Eighty-One Bridge, we're coming up tomorrow, two weeks, the DOT was going to let us know something on the outcome of the meeting that was held in Columbia with DOT, DHEC, Ms. uh, Henigan and the Bellinger, uh, brothers that own the majority of the pond. So hopefully by the Friday, we'll know something on the outcome of that. Cleanup on the State Line has started. Uh, you know, that's been a pet peeve for a long time of mine and, uh, the contractor, I talked with him yesterday, he is going to be just taking down all three buildings and taking them away from that property and that'll be a great sight to see all that gone. The Care Safer Facility, uh, the parking lot is completed and mine looks like probably sometime May, they will be opening. I haven't talked with anyone, but I think they're down to the, uh, as we say on the farm, short road, short cotton roads. And regarding EMS, I think I mentioned this before, the Cape Fear, and I checked again today, they will be moving a helicopter to Scotland Memorial on May the first and that will be a big plus for Marlboro County. I think now we use the Marioncopter, which takes about fifteen minutes, but we got one sitting at Scotland and have access to what you're talking about, a few minutes. Yeah, so a few minutes means a lot in the life-saving business and that's all I got.
Alright, that's a plenty. I too would like to thank, um, staff and particularly Mrs. Bundy for coordinating all of the efforts to getting the building and Recreation Department for the grounds for the ribbon cutting and dedication in naming of the old Blenheim School, the former Wright High School after my dad. It was, um, a success. I am proud to be his daughter and some big shoes to fill. He used to polish all of mine, so now I'm running behind him because, uh, children model what they see. So I'm very appreciative of, uh, the council agreeing to do that. And as was said, we have big plans for, uh, more activities for adults and girls and for the community. I've got some things in my head for a couple of years, so that will be manifest. So we're just looking forward to that and we appreciate the school district, um, giving that facility to the county a few years ago after the new Blenheim School was built. And I can say that we've put it to good use and it will be improved and, uh, thank you very much. And at some point, maybe within the next couple of days, the ceremony will be up on YouTube. Mrs. Bundy is working with Mr. Patterson, his crew and making sure that the, uh, final draft is done. Uh, Mr. Mullin, uh, last night at the CAG meeting, Ms. Lindsay Privet announced that they're going to have a one-day planning and zoning training sometime in the future. So, uh.
We passed that along.
Yeah, get in touch with her and, um, that'll be a good way to, um, get it done for the people that need to do that. We're very appreciative of the remarks made by the, uh, Ms. Stuckey for her achievement and, uh, I don't think I'm out of turn and I'll say on behalf of county council, we'll make a donation towards the effort, uh, Mrs. Stuckey. We're just proud of any academic achievement in the county, so it's quite a feat. Anything else?
No, I'm finished.
Alright, meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.